I'll say.
I have a motion and a second to return to open session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Ma'am, I'll start out with certification of closed session pursuant to Subsection 2.237-12D of the Virginia 1950 as amended. Each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to base of their knowledge on public business matters lawfully exempted from the opening meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes there was a departure from the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure in his or her judgment. Are there any supervisors who believe there was a departure has taken place? Seeing none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Steve Brady?
Yes.
Rebecca Dyke?
Yes.
Horace Christian?
Yes.
Luette Wallace?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Welcome, everyone. At this time, I'm going to ask you to rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, forgive us for where we fail you each and every day. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government, and help us be more like you in each and every way. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to need an approval of the agenda. However, there will be amendments, Mr. Lester.
Ma'am, I'm asking for amendments under the first, under the county attorney, to add in as number two for bond counsel for services for debt consolidation of an IDA project. And number 12 as consideration. Got concern, I'm sorry about that. Consider number 12 be added under the county administrative request as consideration of resolution in support of the proposal for grant funding from the Virginia Open Abatement Authority. Number 12 under the county administrative request, number two under the county attorney.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask for, okay.
One more.
Okay, sorry.
One more is the, under the county attorney report will be number three. This will be the solar energy project revenue sharing ordinance, public here, right, request. Advertise the ordinance. Those three changes.
Those are three changes to the agenda so far. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So move, ma'am, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. I need a second.
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion further? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're moving on to tonight's agenda. We'll have presentations on it, and we ask that you try to keep your presentations short. So at this time, and I don't mean three minutes, but I do mean shorter than normal we would go through. So tonight, we're going to welcome John McCoy with the Lebanon Fire Department, who is the Fire Chief of the Association. Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
How are you all doing tonight? Good. I need to smile more up here. Have been that long since I've seen you. Tonight, I'd be representing Russell County Volunteer Fire Chiefs. Of course, that's all the fire departments, fire chiefs in Russell County. We make, we hold this stuff, the weekly meetings and stuff, that we want to keep the county in great check, especially everything being 100% volunteer.
Pull that up a little bit so they can hear you, and they can hear you on.
Can everybody hear? Good check, ma'am. Everybody's in good check. All right. Anyway, first and foremost, I want to remind the board and citizens that fire service in Russell County is still 100% volunteer. We don't want to change that, and we don't want to change that. We've got a great community, we've got great emergency services in Russell County. I'm thankful for it, and I think everybody up here is thankful for it also. First and foremost, I do want to thank you all for lording the money to allow us to go to digital radios. That's really, really helping us out when we receive those. We've worked with Mo, Mo Lice, dispatch for a while now. He's still doing some programming to get those radios out to us. We've been working with him the last couple of weeks, and hopefully Motorola has everything, we'll be receiving those here before too long. That's going to allow us to do a lot more clear communication in what we call an IDLH environment. That's immediate danger for life and health, all right? So we are thankful for that, but there are some requests that we do have tonight, not dealing with radios, but some other requests, all right? And we'll try to keep it as short as I can for you, so maybe you've got a big agenda. The first thing we'd like to request, the Russell County Volunteer Fire Chiefs, is the I am responding app to be paid through the whole county for all of our fire departments, all right? So that's going to cost $350 per department. For countywide, it's going to be roughly, on average, $9,240. Now, that's the numbers that I came up with. We may be able to get a little bit more of a discount from I am responding on that, as long as the whole county goes countywide. When we go digital, this pager right here, everybody sees that, that's what allows us to be responded, all of our members have those. This digital pager is going to cost $420 per member, all right? So you all bought the radios, we've still got to have pagers to be able to respond to calls, all right? My department alone, that's about $9,240 that we'd have to spend on that, all right? That's 25% of our county funding plus our state fire grant funding. That's a big, big chunk out of our funding to be able to purchase those, all right? That's why we want to go to I am responding, all right? That's going to allow us, everybody carries a cellphone now, we can respond to our cellphones, dispatch sends that directly to our cellphones, we actually respond ourselves, we know who's responding to that, it keeps our hydrants on there, it keeps our pre-plans on there, it's really, really helpful. Lebanon's been using it now for, I'm going to say, six to eight months. St. Paul's been using it for probably two years, and then Belfast is testing it, and Castle is also testing it. I don't have any complaints out of anybody from that application, so we'd really like that to be done. Again, if we don't get dispatch, whether it be through a pager or an application, we're not going to show up, you know, that's really, really big. If we're not there, we can't help. In 2022, the Russell County Fire Department's responded to 976 calls. That is 10,822 donated man hours for volunteer hours. That's a lot of man hours, all right? That's going to include calls, trainings, meetings. These firefighters, firemen and firewomen have spent time away from families, missing birthdays, holidays, doesn't matter if it's Christmas, if it's Thanksgiving, that goes off, we're gone. You know, ten minutes before I walked in here, we had a call. Luckily, I had enough volunteers to be able to man that, take care of that, all right? The last raise that the volunteer fire departments received in Russell County as far as budget-wise was 14 years ago that we can find, all right? I've got some comparables so you all can see what we're dealing with in a raise of costs of lifesaving equipment, because everything we keep on fire trucks in the firehouse is lifesaving equipment, all right? We don't go out and just spend money, I think you all know that, because we have to budget ourselves, all right? A fire engine in 2004 was $105,000. Now, that is a truck, a tank, and a pump. That's no hose, no ladders, no equipment whatsoever, that's a basic fire engine. St. Paul just spec'd about the same engine out. That's $425,000 for comparable engine. Again, no equipment, that's just a fire engine. That's an increase of 328% that we took, and that is a must-have piece of equipment. We show up, we don't have that, what are we going to do, you know? Prices of diesel fuel and gas, you all know, have gone through the roof. 2008, we're looking at $1.80 a gallon, now we're looking at $3.15 a gallon, I mean, that's, and it takes that to operate, all right? An SCBA, which is Self-Containued Breathing Apparatus, you'll see it on the screen, which is our breathing system to be able to go into a fire, to go into IDL environment. In 2010, that's $4,560. 2023, it's $11,500, all right? 156% increase. PPE, which is going to include our helmet, our Nomax, structure pants, structure coat, gloves, and boots, that's costing us $3,500 per member, all right? That is, each member has to have that, you know? We have to take that out of service every 10 years. NFPA, which is an National Fire Protection Agency, governs us, doesn't matter if it sees one call or sees 300, it's got to go every 10 years. We do a good job of trying to rotate this gear and not buy it all at once, but you look at a volunteer agency with 20 men, we've got about 20 sets of turnout gear, all right? Our goal as chiefs, and they'll back me up on this, is number one, to keep our volunteers safe, second is to keep the unit safe, and those go hand in hand with them. I don't know how we are expected to do this without proper funding comparable to what we're having to purchase now. You know, these 156%, 300% increases, that's hitting us hard, really hard. Class B phone, that was running us $98 for a five-gallon bucket, now we're at $253 for a five-gallon bucket. Again, 158% increase. Thermal search camera, that's running us $8,500 in today's environment. That gives us the ability to go inside a structure, search for a victim, of course, it's going to read temperatures, it's going to check structural integrity for us, it'll check for flashover for us. There's a lot of departments inside the county that don't have one. Me personally, I use it on every fireman. I will not go to a fire without one. Call goes off at 2:00 a.m., it's by my side, it doesn't matter. The reason that a lot of the departments don't have one is because they're having to make a decision whether to buy a thermal search camera or pay their insurance prices, and that's, my opinion, not right, my opinion, you know what I mean? If I show up, they should have one, everybody in the county should have one. But, of course, budgeting, you've got to do what you've got to do from there, all right? Insurance bills for the, for the, each department's running between $20,000 and $25,000 per department per year, and we can't do anything about that, that's set in stone with us. The county's almost supplying $26,000 to us for funding on that, all right? We get $13,000, I believe, from state fire grants, I don't want to take $13,000, but the county's supplying $26,000 to us. That's lifesaving essential equipment that we need to keep our community safe that we can't purchase because we don't have the funding. I don't know how we can expect a volunteer to go into burning structure without that gear, because an underfunded department can't afford the gear for them, all right? Fundraising, the community's been great when we fundraise. This is a great community, a great county we live in, and they've helped us out. But just because of the price of our equipment gets more expensive, doesn't mean the community's going to give you more. Usually, they have a lot to set them out, that's what they're going to give you. Bingo is always a big thing for us, but since COVID, everybody knows bingo's kind of dropped, nailed it up. We can't help that. We truly understand the difficulties balancing a budget, because we do it in our own firehouses, all right? So we need some help, we really do need some help. Our average increases of equipment's gone up 210% since our last funding increase. Volunteer Fire Chiefs of Russell County want to propose tonight to bring everybody to level funding of $72,000 each department per year, all right? Right now, we have some departments that receive a little more, some departments that receive less, depending on where they're at in the county, what they operate, and go from there. The reason we want everybody on level funding is because volunteers are so hard to get. We're looking at 327 classroom hours per volunteer to get them certified to be able to go into a structure, all right? That's time at night, time on weekends that they have spent in a classroom, and that's just the basic training, you know? Of course, we do our other training with them, but that's through the state, just the basic training on that. That's going to bring, bring us to close to where we need. That's $576,000 split eight ways, all right? I feel like that's a fair number. We put our heads together in the last couple of months and come to you all a fair number. We're not coming with something that's astronomical out there, we feel like you can't work with. I really feel like you all can come to this, and once you see this and put your heads together, I feel like it's something that is needed. At 2:00 a.m., when we go out and somebody's inside there, you all want us to be underfunded for where we need to be, and I'm not trying to put that back on you all, but we've seen those hardships, all right? That's a real question. If it's your families in there, you know, if it's your mother, your daughter, your grandmother, and we're underfunded, we don't have the equipment we need, we're not going to be able to do the job we do. If you all go out and get in an accident tonight, and we're in the golden hour to get you to a hospital within an hour, get you extracted out of there, do you want to be underfunded? I mean, it's a hard question to ask, all right? Comparables throughout the couple of counties that I pulled, and you all, although you can probably pull a lot more than I can. Tassel County's funding $676,000 per year for fire services. Washington County's at 1.1 million. Smith County, I've got it, 451,000. Montgomery County, I've got it, 559,000, and I've got Russell County, 203,000. In my opinion, that's underfunded, and I think it's something you all need to look at very hard. Do you have any questions or anything like that?
I just want to say, I appreciate the volunteerism that we have here in the county, and I can fully understand as a business what it's like to see all this increase around us, and I really appreciate every, every person that does their job.
And you are great to work with, I can't say a good about that. Any questions I've ever had, just like tonight, getting us on the agenda first so we wouldn't have all the chiefs in Russell County or in Lebanon at one time, thank you, and I really appreciate that.
Anybody else have a comment? Thank you, we appreciate it.
John, I have a comment for you. Go ahead, Lonzo. Go ahead, on those numbers that you gave, and you know, we have worked with you guys on the radios and emergency, and COVID money and this.
Yes, sir.
And we're compiling the budget, and that's one of the things that's on the agenda tonight, we're going, we're getting fast and furious on this, and we're going to see if we can speed this up. So give me your numbers that you've got, that way we can look as, at what you're proposing for all the squads as the.
Now, this is just fire departments.
That's fine, that's even better.
What I would like to see, what we would like to see is $72,000 from the county itself to each department. So St. Paul gets a lot less money, Copper Creek gets a little bit more because they run two departments. Where we respond with each other a lot now, we're relying on them, that's why we want to bring everybody to level funding, and we feel like $72,000 is where we need to be at to purchase the equipment that we need to keep rolling forward.
Is that included, is that, is that part of the, including the fire grants and the rest, this is in addition?
No, I don't include fire grants, it's going to stay in my.
And I will say this too, for the public's knowledge, having a fire department in your area actually reduces your insurance rates.
Correct.
So there is a cost savings to have that, and like I said, I just want to throw that out.
And that's another thing, is we look at some departments that are underfunded, even us, that goes back to, excuse me, an ISO classroom, which is your insurance protection classroom, which is what all insurance companies are going to rate on, and that goes back to equipment. They come in every five to 10 years, and they will go through every piece of equipment, they'll go through every piece of apparatus you've got, they'll go through your training hours, and that's affecting a lot, because a lot of departments can't afford what they need to bring into lower ISO, so.
I'd like to say I appreciate everything you've done, each and every department, the whole county, not just the county, state, and the nation. We can't let them down, I can say that. Don't let them down.
As you put together your numbers, you gave me, or all of us, percentages. If you can compose a narrative along with that, I'd like to see that also.
That work, you want me to send it to Lonzo, just email Lonzo?
Send it to him, and he'll see that we all get a call.
That's great.
Thank you so very much, we appreciate your coming.
If you all got questions, you can find me, you can find these fire chiefs about anywhere, so just come find us, all right? Thank you all.
Can I add one question, one statement?
Be okay?
Normally not, but I'm going to allow this one, nobody else.
My name's Brett Evans, I'm the Fire Chief for Cleveland Volunteer Fire Department, and I know I've reached out to you, I've reached out to Steve, I've reached out to Lonzo down there. Talking about the radio situation, our department in Cleveland, we're going to be three units, three mobile units short, we're going to be one base station short, and we're going to be eight cordless handhelds for our members. So this is also not counting into the budget of which we are asking you all, but this is stuff that we need to keep our firefighters safe. It's a security issue, it's a security, it's safety, and we got to have it. And I can just tell you, I have, like John said, $26,000 in the whole of our money, especially when you pay for your own insurance, you're taking care of your own fuel bills. I can show you that our department pays $24,000 a year for our insurance. So I don't have $30,000 to buy radios. So what the county has allotted us, for my department, is five mobile radios, 10 handheld radios. Right now, our department can hold 18 people, I've got the 14 on Russell County. Now, how can I go as a fire chief and say, "You 10 people are more important than everybody is? Everybody should have a radio. If you have never been on a fire scene, you need to go," because anything can happen that quick, and if it don't work out, you're going to end up getting somebody hurt or killed. And I'm sorry, everybody's life's worth more than $3,000.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, ma'am.
Does Mr. Evans work through your department as a fire chief?
No.
He is Cleveland Fire Department, correct.
Okay, but you don't represent all of those?
Tonight, I'm representing Russell County Fire Chiefs Association, but what he said falls directly into me. Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you all coming.
Good evening. I appreciate you all letting me come and speak. Please excuse my voice, allergies. I'm here this evening to address a need that our county has that most may not be aware of. David Eaton had mentioned it at the last meeting. There is a need in this county for a shelter for homeless individuals, displaced residents, and emergency situations as well. The county emergency management coordinator, Jess Powers, serves this county, and he does a remarkable, amazing job, especially with what resources that he's given. Jess does an amazing job. But now, he maintains the shelters when it is necessary. But now, myself, being an employee of DSS, we are also mandated to work the shelters if the need does arise. It's been several years since the need has arisen that we had to, excuse me, but in the past, it has come up. Currently, the only shelter available is Green Valley, is Green Valley Baptist Church here in Lebanon, and while this is a blessing to the county for sure, if there's a natural disaster, such as the flood that happened in Hurley or a severe snowstorm, it would be very hard to get people from Swords Creek or Holnaker over to Green Valley. That would be almost impossible, especially in the middle of a snowstorm or something like that. Now, the schools are supposed to be shelters for the county, but Swords Creek Elementary School doesn't have any showers, and actually, it's in a flood zone. So a couple of weeks ago, when it just came a hard rain, there was about six to eight inches of water running through the parking lot of the school, so that's not a very good shelter. The Holnaker Fire Hall is also supposed to be a shelter. It's not handicap accessible, it has no showers or facilities either. So there's really nothing on that end of the county if something did happen. Now, also, many of you may not be aware of the homeless situation that we do have in Russell County. Now, currently, there are 91 homeless individuals receiving food stamp benefits in Russell County. Now, that could be people that are staying with other family members, that are just bouncing from place to place, that don't have anywhere to call their own residence. It could also be that they're actually living in tents, we do have that, or less, and people are not aware of that. You know, you don't see them on the sidewalks like in San Francisco, but Russell County does have a homeless situation, and there's been several instances that I've been aware of in the 16 years that I've been at Social Services, where we have homeless individuals come into the agency that need somewhere to stay, and the nearest place we have is either Norton or Bristol, that our social workers will have to, you know, take them down there a lot of times. And so there is a need for that in Russell County. In 2022, Mr. Powers sheltered 164 people in Russell County, either due to house fires, power outages, weather events, even spousal abuse. Now, most of this, of course, is funded by the American Red Cross and the Salvation Army, but when someone's house burns down, like there was 33 structure fires last year and four already this year. So when someone's house burns down, they have to scramble to try to find them a motel or somewhere to go, you know, at least temporarily. So it is always an issue. The Old Southern States Building in Holnaker is currently being looked at as a shelter for that end of the county. Now, this is not a need for the town of Holnaker, this is a need for the county in general, and would serve the needy residents of the entire county. This is not a request of the emergency management, nor is it a request from DSS. There are currently no state or federal programs that would help people with shelter that could or would be funded by DSS. I'm simply approaching the board because I have witnessed this need firsthand in our county. What I'm requesting from the county is that the county helps secure the grants to complete this shelter and equip it, or if possible, use the CARES Act money, whatever may be available, so that this shelter could be completed and get it in use for the most vulnerable people in our county. And that's all.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you. Next, we're moving on to our new business, and I need an approval of the minutes, please.
Motion to approve, ma'am, Chair.
I have a motion, I need a second. I've got a second, all in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries for the minutes, thank you. I need an approval of expenditures.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Going to pay deals. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you very much. Moving along, we're going to move along to the committee appointments for board consideration. Do we have anybody that wants to present this tonight?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. For the IDA, I'd like to present Ron Blankenship.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Ron Blankenship to serve a four-year term that's vacant on the IDA. I need a second.
Second.
I've got a second. Any discussion?
Let me ask you, do you have somebody on the, on that board? You don't have anybody on there.
He's replacing.
He's a vacant guy. You've got somebody?
No.
Okay, so you're next, okay, got you. Just making sure.
Mr. Ray is replacing Mr. Sorensen. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next, we come to the Southwest Virginia Community Corrections Facility, for Doug Howard, our two-year term.
I want to reappoint Mr. Howard.
I'll say it.
We have a motion to reappoint Mr. Howard and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. At this time, we're coming to the citizens' comment period, which is limited to three minutes. I'll open the floor for that. Any comments? All right, one, two, three, done. Constitutional reports and requests, I'm looking over the audience, do I see anybody? Nope. Next, we have the county attorney reports and requests.
Pat, thank you, ma'am, excuse me, thank you, ma'am, Chair. The first thing that I have is a resolution that's included in your packet, and it's in regard to the opioid litigation. This resolution authorizes our outside counsel, they're the ones that have provided all of this to us. It was a form resolution that we needed to just plug in our, that it was Russell County, and gives them authority to settle the claims against Teva, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, and CVS. and CVS. And so I would just ask the board to approve that, to allow us to keep working to settle those claims and receive some more money through the opioid litigation.
Okay, and before I, well, we probably need a motion and a second on the floor for discussion, so I'll call for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I need a second.
I'll say it.
I have a second from Mr. Christian, and discussion, please. Now, let me clarify this, that this is an addition to what we've already gone through.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right, so the public understands this is just a little bit more?
These are the actual distributors?
Yes, that's, and when we, when we first, when I brought the other settlement to you, that was only a partial settlement, so there was, there's different moving pieces to this. And so this, this only pertains to those distributors.
Thank you for the clarification for the public. I've got a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Patton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second item under county, the county attorney reports, and Lonzo will probably have to address any questions, but I have discussed an issue with him regarding the issuance of bonds by the IDA, which would require moral obligations from the county and some restructuring of that debt. And as I've advised Lonzo previously, I'm not bond counsel. So when the county needs a bond counsel, you do have to hire an outside counsel for that. And so it would be my suggestion for that, those particular matters, to hire outside counsel for legal matters relating to the restructuring of the debt and bond counsel.
Okay, we have a recommendation by the attorney to look for bond counsel for matters of obligations.
Do you just select one, or do you have to prepare?
And I pulled it up. You actually do not, excuse me, I thought I had it pulled up. There isn't, there is an exemption under 2.2-4344 that you do not have to, a public body may enter into contracts without competition for the purchase of legal services.
Professional services.
Well, it's not just professional, it's for legal services in particular, that you don't have to use competition.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I've got a second. Further discussion, board? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Last matter I have for the board is, it's a draft of a solar energy project revenue share ordinance. Late in 2022, the board asked me to look into that, and Madam Chair created a committee, and we've been working to that, and working on ordinance. And after, you know, the committee and our collaborative efforts, which have been great, it's been determined that because the county does not have zoning, we can't adopt a solar ordinance that governs where and how they can be placed. But what the code does allow is, and what this is for, is basically a tax resolution, and how that big solar projects, not the one just that someone has at their house, would be taxed. I've got a draft of what I had prepared for, at the last committee meeting, at the last committee meeting, it was brought up, that you can also do, you can incorporate the storage component into these ordinances. And I do not have that link, but I am going to, when Lonzo gets that to me, I'm going to amend this ordinance. But what I'm requesting the board to do, if you want to move forward with this, is just to authorize the county administrator to advertise this and set it on the agenda for the next hearing. But he won't advertise it until I add the additional language, and I'll send that to you all as well. But this, this will be the majority of the language, and there'll just be additional language on how the storage is taxed pursuant to the Code of Virginia.
Okay, so it's my understanding that I'm going to ask for a motion to do this, and for public notice tonight, Mr. Breeding and Mr. Lovelace was the two representatives from our board, and we had experts from across the state. And I'm going to call for discussion here, but I need a motion and a second here.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I got a second from Mr. Lovelace, our two members. And for discussion purposes, anybody have anything that you want to add, subtract, or anything to this ordinance?
For a large project like this, does this fall into machine and tool?
This is, this is what, for a large, it's, you're opting to go for this, to assess this number, you know, per megawatt, instead of proceeding under the county's machine and tool.
Okay, thank you.
That's.
Okay, and I'm not going to put Mr. McFadden on the spot, but you're okay with this because we're doing this for you, right? So your, your IDA is all happy with this?
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
And you've been at the table the whole time, and we appreciate that. Okay. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Next, I'm moving on to the county administrator reports and requests. Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing on the county administrator reports is, this is a follow-on of what Katie had done. This is American Electric Power EP letter support for the Department of Energy bipartisan infrastructure law, long-duration energy storage facility funding opportunity announcement, which is a letter support on behalf of Russell County, Virginia. Would like to voice support for the American Electric Power and its application of long-duration energy storage demonstrations. The Clinch River Power Plant has been an integral part of the community over 65 years, and believe this investment in a new battery technology will allow it to remain an important part of our community for the years to come. What AP is proposing, a long-term battery storage facility units in there is over 15 acres, a $70 million investment. So this will consist of 240 employees during the construction phase, 50 employees after the phase. So of course, the board had to act quickly on this, along with the IDA and the rest, to get this through. We need an approval for the board for the American Electric Power letter of support.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
I'll second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I didn't ask for any discussion because I figured you didn't need to. That's a win, right?
That's a win. A big win, $70 million. Second, first next on there is the environmental impact report for the construction for the Department of Corrections and Appalachian Detention Center wastewater treatment plan upgrades. This is a, as of course, you can see from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, the reviewers did not anticipate any adverse impacts from the projects and the recommendations as follows. DEQ has no objections to the construction, provided that it meets all applicable laws, regulations, policy, and coordination of the needs of the project. I need approval for the environmental impact from the county's perspective for the construction of Department of Corrections Appalachian Detention Center wastewater treatment plant at the Blackford unit.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Nothing further? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
The next one on the, on the county administrator reports is the American Rescue Plan Recover Act Tourism Grant, and I'm going to let Shala Little explain this one to you.
How are you all this evening, I guess? We're good. Thank you, Shala. So I'm sure that was presented in your packet. Basically, just going over this briefly, because I know you all are ready to get home and to dinner. So am I. So basically, this is split up. This budget is from Virginia Tourism Corporation, which they got ARPA funding during COVID. So we were finally able to get our budget approved, and the budget that is in your packet is the budget that was approved. So basically, we have $30,000 total. $1,6,500 is going towards tourism product development, which is going to focus on creating an adventure guide, which will be print and digital format, so we're not just doing one format. We'll have both. So it's going to highlight the entire county, not just one particular area, including events, businesses, the river, you know, all of our tourism assets that we have here in this great county. It's also going to help with our website updating and development. Then 5,000 of it is going to go towards marketing production, which is going to focus on professional photography, because that's where we lack. So 5,000 of that is going to be split between a local professional photographer, and then we're also going to have a drone specialist coming in to have drone photos of the river, of the mountains, of everything. So, and then we also have 8,500 of that set aside for paid media fields, which is going to be our ads. So that's going to be in Blue Ridge Outdoors, that's also going to be in Google Ads, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, all of those different types of ads. So our BRO ads in the magazine, they are expensive, so we are limited to two. But we'll also already have the created ad that we can then use in further ad developments, if we want to go on to other BRO issues. Those issues are going to be focused, hyper-focused in regions such as Georgia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, West Virginia, and Kentucky, because that's where the majority of the people who are coming to our website and our social media pages are coming from. So there's been a lot of thought process that's gone into this. So this is the budget that's already been approved by ARPA, which is through HORM, their legal organization, I guess. So I just urge you to, you know, go.
Could you speak briefly about that idea I called you about?
Yeah, so Mr. Eaton came to me about QR development for the county. So we've, it's a very, it's very easy to do, so I've gone through some of the different ideas that we could go through, having a QR code for the entire county, displayed on businesses, advertised at events, things of that nature, just to draw people towards either the county website or our tourism page as well. So I think it'd be a great way to incorporate everything. You also have a link tree hooked to it, so you can have multiple links on one. So it's just something that, you know, I'm continuing developing, so. Yeah, of course. You have any questions?
No, but you can also hook that QR code to businesses.
Yes.
And so as people walk by that particular business, they can shoot that QR code and find out all about things they can purchase and help the economy rolling.
Yes, thank you, Shala, for your presentation. We're excited to accept, I hope, $30,000 in funding.
Well, I'll make that motion to accept.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Now, I need a second.
Second.
I've got a lot of seconds, I'll take them all. No further discussion is needed, I'm sure, but all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is, again, we're talking money, just as reports, everyone knows, if you don't. Of course, the Virginia Assembly, the 2020, '23, '24 budget, the '23 General Assembly adjourned with what they call a skinny budget. So, okay, how do you ever get a skinny budget? Anyhow, I like to have one of those, but we don't get the pleasure of it. What it means is there'll be reconvening, as they come out of special committees, to take on these other things. And one of the biggest things that is under this budget is, in their analysis last year, the General Assembly, and when they were working through the schools, they, some of them came up and were either overextended, they had a gap funding, or there was, you know, there was overstated or understated. So they're going back through to make sure that all schools is held harmless. Now, in that, and I encourage the board supervisors to look at that, and we'll talk about the budget meetings later, the, actually, Russell County was held harmless on about $443,000. I think that was the number off the top of my head. So we'll be dealing with that when it comes through to it. So again, I encourage you all to take a look at those, and we'll be dealing with that during the budget process. Next on the county administrator reports is, of course, every month, the BDOT Monthly Road System Report. So as you can see, between what the board actions, right now, BDOT's not seeking any board action in a form of resolution. I do have a couple of things that I've got cleaned up our house, even on my request, but take a look at the maintenance activities and the maintenance schedule plans from BDOT over the next month. Next, on the county administrator request is, of course, we're talking trash again, disposal, is this is the Cumberland Plateau Waste Management Authority User Agreement and the '23, '24 vote. As you can see, the Cumberland Plateau and both Tim and Carl sits on that board, and as everyone knows, with the rate of inflation and everything going up, so does trash. I'm sorry to say, that's just the operation. But the good thing to say is, we're in negotiations. Right now, the 2023 Cumberland Plateau Waste Management Authority Manpower Service Agreement and the 2023 User Agreement and the budget, what, after discussing, the board approved 60 to increase our budget only by $1,242 a month. That's not bad, not considered. That was hard work. That was really hard work to keep it down on that volume. And Tim and Carl will both tell you that it was a long, hard discussion between all three counties to get it down into that. And that would include the cover of increases in fuels and utilities. That is very good. So I need a motion for approval for the user agreement and a motion to approve the budget.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. I do, if I may. Now, I don't want to pin you all down to anything, but I realize that we're saying that because of gas, that the cost of running this stuff, the fuel, has caused us to do this in our operating budget. Now, suppose we have a different take on things next year. Is this a year-by-year thing, or are we, are we stuck on this and gas goes down to about 80 hypothetically? I'm just saying, I'm asking this question.
It's year-by-year.
It's year-by-year. But let me clarify it even more, because we did discuss it during the Waste Management Authority. If there's a shortfall, it does go down. What is remaining, as what we call a net profit, will be split between the counties. It will be returned. If we do not expend it, then it will be returned to us.
And that was a matter of much discussion also.
Yes, that was a very.
It will be returned to the.
Yes. And that doesn't matter if it's just fuel, any line item that we have within this budget is not expended and approved by the Waste Management Authority, will be returned equally back to each county.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, again, on the, this is the BDOT, this is for notice of Route 871 that we had discussed before, and T-1211, I think, Towne Cleveland, there's members here. The abandonment resolution, I need a public hearing to set this up for the, I think it's the April 3rd, April 3rd is the board meeting, for a public hearing at the next board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
For a motion to abandonment of Route 871 and T-1211.
I have a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Second.
That's just for the public hearing.
That's just public hearing.
That is, it is public hearing. Yes.
All, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, again, this is part of what the county attorney spoke of, Katie did on the national open, these are settlements, what, the resolution that you approved under her request was actually for the national distributors, manufacturers, and that was the settlement through this. These are the ones that you heard about through CBS, or the retailers. So they're stepping this process down from the manufacturers, distributors, and wholesalers to the retailers. It's a step-by-step down process. So I've got, on my request, from the distributors and the manufacturers, an appropriation of $44,078.41. That goes back into the Russell County National Opia Settlement. I need approval for $44,078.41.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the request is the Department of Criminal Justice Services. This is the Law Enforcement Block Program Grant appropriation of $2,623. This is to help support their efforts in to reduce crime. It's a little part of the Department of Sheriff's Grant. This is Assistant Administration, $26,000, I mean, $2,623. So moved.
I have a motion. I need a second.
We're trying to increase it.
To accept $26,030.
I like that.
Clarification, $2,623 only. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I guess that leads into my next one. Of course, everyone knows, this general legislation went through, again, the skinny budget. One of the things that we want to consider, I've been compiling the requests on the budget and what's coming through on departments. And I'd like to request an earlier meeting to start on the budget meetings than we have first proposed during the organizational meeting this month. Let's, because I've got a date on it, and if any, if we can, have a reconvening meeting to start the budget process as fast as possible.
Yes, sir. Does anybody have any dates that we can work on this, please?
Just a second.
When you want to leave on?
I have some suggestions, and then in just a second.
20th?
20th.
Check your calendars, everything.
See, the regional meeting, as you can see on the schedule, was, the Budget Committee Workshop did not start till the 24th. Now, I'm at the 24th, so I was trying to move it up from the 24th and do the 24th too, to speak. No march.
March.
We're moving fast this year, yes. That's up to y'all's discretion.
So you're saying the 24th?
Right now, y'all have approved the 24th on the regular schedule. Yeah, I need this in addition to the 24th.
20th is good for us. Mr. Lovelace?
So the 20th.
6 o'clock?
The 20th will be the Monday at 6 o'clock. Perfect.
6 o'clock here.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a consensus. We don't need a vote on that, right? Because we've already voted to approve those dates. We're adding, I can't see.
You're adding, you're adding March 20th to the current schedule?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So do you want me to vote?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to add the 20th.
Doesn't hurt to the.
To the list that we've already approved.
Yeah, be a full board, okay, so I'll say it. It's not the workshop, so.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the, well, the next item on the county ministry request is the Russell County Vehicle Surplus Request. This is vehicles that we have sitting, as you can see, out in the government center, that has exceeded their useful life for repair. And I would like to, we're going to advertise these on the government sites. I need a request to approve all three vehicles for surplus.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the vehicles. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the motion, sorry, the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is the one added to the agenda, and you have a copy of. This one is number 12. This is consideration of a resolution in support of the proposal for grant funding from the Virginia Opiate Abatement Authority. Russell County, in partnership with the Mended Women's Life Recovery Center, would like to grant $25,000 from the Virginia Opiate Abatement Authority for FY 2023.
I'll make the motion for the purpose of discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're in discussion.
Mended Women is, is a new facility. It's not in operation yet. It's really Washington County. I think Washington County put like $200,000 into this facility. But this will be a regional facility, and it's women's facility. And it's actually a treatment facility, which we really only have one here in South West Virginia at this particular level. And it'll be available for women from Russell County as well. I would propose that we, you know, approve this, so we can kind of get our foot in the door and be a partner with Washington County and City of Bristol in this new facility. They're going to apply for some of the opioid mandate. And they're in the process of putting an application in. And I'd also like to recommend that we, you know, partner with them on that. It will not affect our money anyway at all. I'm thinking they're asking maybe for the next year, like $1.5 million. And they're going to buy the property. We've got a property lease right now. They're going to buy that property. And when they buy the property, that will reduce their overall costs substantially. This is something we needed for a long time here in South West Virginia. We've been sending them everywhere. This is something we need. And I have a notion, I talked to Lonzo about, we're, you know, we have to use this money. We can't, we can't replace existing operational money. But this is a new facility, so we're not. At the two facilities we have here in Lebanon, I think maybe we ought to look at, maybe try to take those up. They're at a phase two, is what they're at now.
They're currently at a two level, yes.
Two level. We might use some of our money to take them up to a three level, which would make them a treatment facility as well.
Yeah, they're recovery currently, certified as a recovery facility, not a treatment. There is a distinction.
But that's something we'd have to work with them on, you know, and that's something to be right here in Russell County, two, on two separate locations. One for men, one for women, smaller than for women. That's kind of where we are on this one. I worry that this money has got a lot of strings to it. You really can't use it to do, you know, to do much with an existing facility unless you can come up with some new sort of program that it has to go on with, you know. So I'd like to get some of this money into work, you know, into work in Washington County. And that buy-in is very small. I think maybe City of Bristol put in $25,000, did. But they've also got money from two or three foundations. I think they're just about ready. They're going to target, start it, I think it was April or May, something like that. We've got people we can send.
So this is just for us to consider, so you want us to read and find out, you're going to give us a copy of that?
You got it.
Do we? Okay, okay, it's just, I see, I apologize, I apologize, okay. So.
Well, let me.
Do they have an application in, like, we're supposed to do with the opioid stuff? Because have we done that yet, Lonzo? We haven't made our application yet.
They're preparing an application for opioid money. We can distribute ours without an application, right?
Well, right.
Our money.
Our money. Y'all can do it. The OAA, in their golden standard, they request an application. You can do application to their money, and you can do the same process. We're just piggybacking on the same gold standard that the OAA. If that was the case, if they could, you know, once y'all approve, I think the committee approved a draft application based off the draft of the OAA, I don't mean to be so confusing, but these are the acronyms. Process, then the recovery house in Amityton, the Mended Women can fill out an application.
No problem.
So what, so what this is, is, don't we need to get our applications ready? And then they would be part of our application process for this particular money? I must be real confused.
I'm confused too, because I thought we, I thought we had to have that application in place before we started.
We don't have to do it.
That is up to discretion of the board.
That's up to us.
When we discuss it, we discuss the application, you know, process to make it, you know, transfer it to the auditors. You know, that's the easiest way to do it. I guess this is new to the counties, and it's new to all counties, so we're not asking questions any other county has not asked. There's two pots of money. There is local money and there's state money. You put an application in, one or the other, and that's the way it works. Now, usually what the county's money, the locality, they have for programs that is in the county originally surrounding it. That's the way it works. Russell County currently has $317,000, including what was appropriated, I mean, not including what's appropriated tonight. This is an addition that will be for new opiate programs. That's a key word, like Steve said. This is, this can only be used for new opiate programs. If you have a nonprofit or a church that is, say, they're doing treatment for alcoholism, they have a treatment. They can create an opiate treatment program. But they have to be a proven facility, a proven nonprofit, that has these types of treatment. And it's not a new off-the-cup, starting new facility. It's got to have best practices and proven track records in this area. That was part of the court order, and that is part of the OAA golden standard procedure. It's very restrictive. I don't mean to go into the long-term conditions while I stand here. But if y'all want to continue, I can complete the applications, like I said, from the gold standard, and y'all can move through it. And at the budget meeting, which y'all will be in full session back on the 20th, I can have that ready for you. How's that? To start distribution.
If you would send an application to Linda Austin.
Linda Austin.
Give your email, so she can fill it out.
Well, I'll tell you this. I had a family member that, I think every family's been impacted by opiates, everybody. But I had a family member that had to go to Atlanta, Georgia, and is still in Atlanta, Georgia. Because we don't have a treatment, and I'm saying treatment facility here in the area. And if we buy into this thing early, I'm sure that, I'm not saying they're going to deny or refuse anybody, but I'm just, I'm thinking that it would help us greatly to know we could go to Washington County and visit and have that participation on the ground instead of all these people being shipped out all over the country to get treatment.
On this level, SIRS too, while you're acting as Sarah now, I mean, it's very comprehensive. But also Dixon County's putting a new treatment facility in too, so, you know, you probably need.
Might want to participate in it.
You might look at that in the future too, so.
I just, this is an opportunity to use some of that money for what it's intended to be used. It has to be opioid, can't be alcohol related, it has to be opioid.
I think that's very noble, and I don't say that this is not a good thing. I think that we need to consider all things and make sure we're considering Russell County first. And I know we can be regional, and we talk about that, but I really, I really want to drill down on this a little bit. I do, this is first I've seen of this, so.
Well, Russell, this is the Russell County.
Give us a minute.
20 minutes standing, you know, we're going to use.
I get you, I get you, and I understand that. And I do think it's a noble thing to talk about, and how we talked about regionalism as a whole on a lot of other areas. I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, when Tazewell County calls and Buchanan County calls, and we may be working on our own type situation, right? Because we could have an opportunity.
So if we give in 25, we can ask them for 25? I ain't even seen this year.
We can start swapping money.
I think Washington County gave about all of their money.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
I hope they got more than 200,000.
Well, they may, I don't know what they've done. They're trying to get it into the system, use it.
And it is based on opiates. It doesn't base off the demographics of the population, you would think that it is. I hate to say this, but Dixon County, Buchanan, Russell has a high opiate utilization.
Then, yes, then Washington County, excellent, yes.
Well, my only thoughts is that we're sitting on this recovery here in Russell County, and we're trying to get our accreditation and move up. And I don't want to be seen hard-hearted and not work with my neighbors or anything like that. But I just think that we may be needing this 25,000 to keep air sustained. Because that's part of our program, and we are charging the peers, rent the state, at our facilities. And if we step it up, we will be needing this money. We will be needing the $25,000 here in the county.
I don't think $25,000 is going to make us break. But this is just an opportunity to be a part of a facility, a big regional facility that's going to be in operation here probably in a couple of months, and have our, you know, have our name on it. It's just something you can't buy, you know, if we miss this opportunity, then it's.
We've got a lot of residents in the hotel over in Agnes, at the jail, and that's what they're going into.
And we do have, our folks are traveling to Amityton to work. That's part of our program now. We are working with Bristol and Amityton. We have them both there, and they come to us.
I serve on the Cumberland Board up here, and I can tell you the state hospital is full to capacity. They can't take anymore. And if we don't have a place quickly, something that we can aggressively get these people in, I'm telling you, it's, the pandemic's here, I mean, and we're going to have to address it one way or the other. I just think it's a great investment to partner regionally in a facility like this. And if we can take more money and upgrade our facilities, I think it's the money that we need to utilize for to do that also.
Did Washington County receive opioid men?
Yes.
Yep, so.
They get to.
Yes, they did. They get to, I think it was what, 200,000 plus? 200,000 theirs. It's what it's dedicated to.
And they get some, they get some foundation money.
But like I stated before, you know, Russell County, Buchanan, and Tazewell, and Dixon, we have a higher opiate utilization than Axleville.
You know, we partner on a regional jail. I mean, it ain't located in Russell County. And most of the majority of that is what you're seeing incorporated into the regional process of regional jails and prosecuting the fourth generation, and this is just, I think, a great opportunity.
Well, like I said, I think it's very noble, but we don't have air programming and air application process in place, so.
We need to get it in place ASAP. It'll be ready by the 20th.
And we don't, we don't say that that's not a bad thing, and I agree with that. So with that, Mr. Freedy, would you amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion if we can have the application in place and to review on the 20th, and we'll make a decision then.
I'll amend my second.
Thank you so very much. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Linda Austin, Rusty, Lynn Austin.
Okay, we have come to the end of our agenda, and I'm going to quickly ask the board for discussions and reminders. Mr. Lovelace?
I just have one thing. If I could go back to number seven under request, and I should have asked this then. But, and I know BDOT's not here, Lonzo, but.
They will be next time.
Okay, but why are we having this public hearing on our own? We haven't ever done any, past one abandoned roads. They have.
If you, it's, if you, they're going to advertise it, of course. You're just saying you're going to abandon A71 and T-121 is all you're doing. They're going to run the advertisement.
Okay, so this is the same as what we're doing.
This is saying that Russell County Board Supervisors has intent to abandon Route A71 and T-121. That they will do the advertising reports, they'll do the public hearing.
This is the same road towards Simter.
Yes, it is.
Okay, it just seemed different this time for some reason.
No, they will be doing it. It's waiting for us to proceed. As you send in your packet, there's two types of discontinuers, and there's abandonment. You know, these type of roads, you know, in the past, we've traditionally abandoned.
But it reads in their, in their sample, their example, that they give us their template, like we are abandoning it. like we are abandoning it.
No, it's the process. It's a, it's a dual process.
They're going to do it anyway. They're going to do it anyway.
It really, really sounds like we're doing it.
It makes us look like we're doing it.
I know it, and it's, it's the same way where we went through the roads that was in, in, you know, down in Castlewood and the ones that we banned before at, down in Crossbridge, it's, it's the same concept.
It says, it says locality provides notice of intent to abandon.
Yes.
Resolution or letter to Commissioner. See the difference?
It goes, they will, when you do it, based off the motion tonight, it goes to the V-Dot. They will hold the public hearing. They send those results to the CTV Board, and if there's nothing on that criteria for economic development, housing, and rest, it will be abandoned. I don't know why they even put you in the process, too.
I don't either.
Because you have no decision in it, other than, you know, it goes before the Board as a notice. That's, that's basically the best way to say it.
Anything else, Mr. Lovelace?
Thank you.
Mr. Brady, I mean, Mr. Wright?
No, I have nothing.
Mr. Eaton?
I got one thing I want to bring up when we have our budget meetings. This has laid on my heart pretty heavily, so I'm going to bring it out. I think that we need an Excel program and fund it through the schools, or if the county can help in any way. Let me give you an example. We have a lot of great kids in our county that excel to, to go into state competition. And what happens is, in that, then somebody's requiring these kids to do fundraising and go out, collect money. Through this pandemic, businesses have been hit hard. I mean, hard. And it's sad, it's sad to me, because some of these kids can afford it, some cannot afford it, and I just don't like the fact that they should be limited without somebody paying for their motel room and transportation and their food. If they excel to that limit, they ought to be rewarded. They shouldn't have to worry about going out here and raising three hundred dollars when they live on six hundred dollars a month, and they have a kid that makes straight A's and excelled in to that point. I would like for us to look in the budget, to talk to the school, and see if we could set up an Excel program to push our kids and take that burden off of the parent and the child, that they're not going to have to pay for this. If they get to that level and they excel and they, and they succeed, we're going to take care of these, these things, and I think that it'd be a huge, it'd be a great investment, because there's nothing any better you can invest in than your children, in your children's future. But there has been circumstances where the pressure that gives the parent the indication, honey, I can't afford it. I can't afford it. So if I can't afford it, that limits that child to excel and to get to that limit. So I think we ought to take that off their back and see if we can't make an investment into helping the situation. The second thing I have is I would like to encourage V-Dot to not use this Suri on these roads. I don't think that, I think that was a waste of money. Our roads are in terrible condition, and that Suri did not help the situation whatsoever. I think that they're going to have to be paid, and we're going to have to talk to our, I've done talked to delegates and senators about it, to say, look, I don't know what you did, the money that was spent was a waste.
You do nothing, discontinued that. New V-Dot?
Well, I mean, it shouldn't have happened in the first place, and now we've got potholes and choke holes and ruts in the roads and the main highways, even on the main drag going from here down to St. Paul, well, you're about to get swallowed in a car down through there. I know, I have a son that lives in Moccasin, and it's pretty bad, so I think that, I'd like to see this board write a letter to encourage them, if you're going to do anything, pave the roads and not put the Suri down.
Did new V-Dot Commissioner change that program?
Well, too late. That's all I got. I've got all my soapbox now.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Mr. Brady?
No, ma'am, I agree.
We all agreed with no slurry of particularly filling the potholes with that stuff that doesn't work.
Yeah, you did.
It's fake.
It looked.
It's fake.
Go down to the Uros district.
Ms. Dye, you got anything?
No, not tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Yes, we're on that abandonment road, uh, Bay of the Polygamies. Last month, we considered nineteen and fifty-eight Hansonville. They've been a developer that, thank you, the, um, still property, and I'm wondering if that developer is getting the property at one time along the highway on fifty-eight and nineteen, that, that be any surveillance?
Say that again, then.
Or fifty, nineteen comes in the fifth way direct there, the intersection of Red Light and Hansonville.
Yeah, that's, that's what being abandoned back to the regional property.
To the regional property, so.
Yeah, please.
And then the developer, he has, and he has purchased, in the process of purchasing that property, because it tore the house down, they done excavation work and all that.
I, no, I don't know as far as the Business Transaction Act, where it's, I just note that the board approved the reversion back to V-Dot.